If you would, please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here today safely. We thank you so much for the start of a new semester and what that means to the lives of the students that we serve here at St. Pete College. I thank you, Lord, for time off yesterday in remembrance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We have come so far as a country and as a group of people, and we ask that you continue to lead us forward, to give us wisdom in the decisions that we make, to bring us closer together as a community, and we thank you for the blessings that we've been given here. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to begin today with some recognitions, and we're going to start with presentation of retirement resolutions, and if I could have Rebecca Ludwig come up first, please.
Wow. How about that?
It's amazing.
It is amazing. Okay, I'm going to start reading while her entourage comes up. Whereas Dr. Rebecca Ludwig, an outstanding researcher and published author, began her career as Dean of Health Sciences at St. Petersburg College's Caruth Health Education Center in 2012, and whereas Dr. Ludwig immediately began to create a work environment based on support and inclusiveness, she welcomed others' suggestions and supported and encouraged their engagement in a variety of broad-based professional activities. And whereas Dr. Ludwig proved to be an accomplished communicator who held monthly meetings and sent weekly updates of scholastic and community accomplishments of colleagues and students to those who worked in departments under her leadership, and whereas Dr. Ludwig's dedication to her profession was further recognized when she was selected to serve as co-chair of the 17th World Congress of the International Society of Radiographers and Radiologic Technologists. And whereas Dr. Ludwig worked tirelessly and successfully with new program directors, academic chairs, and clinical instructors to help them acclimate to their new duties and responsibilities to ensure the success of their departments. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. Rebecca Ludwig, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout these years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 16th day of January 2018. Wow. You are so big on tradition. Thank you.
I feel so, so privileged and so loved. I can't tell you how much that means to me. Working here has been an amazing experience, and I've had the deep pleasure of working with SPC's finest faculty and staff, and the family at HEC is nothing short of amazing. They really are a family that works together and cares about each other. And then you add all the support people in administration here at EPI. There isn't a mountain we couldn't move. I really appreciate the challenge, the excitement, and the unending rewards. It's been a great journey. Thank you.
I don't believe Thaddeus is here, so we will call up John Williams next.
Said resolution, whereas Dr. John Williams began his career at St. Petersburg College as a part-time instructor in 2001, and whereas Dr. Williams earned the admiration of his students and colleagues and became a full-time physics instructor on the Clearwater Campus in 2007. Whereas Dr. Williams served as the Academic Chair of Natural Sciences on the Clearwater Campus for more than a year, providing excellent leadership and service to St. Petersburg College. And whereas Dr. Williams, who passionate, who is passionate about climate change and the need for alternative sources of energy, continued to make a number of significant contributions to the college when he returned to his previous role as a faculty member in 2009, including advocating and insisting on the installation of solar panels on campus buildings. And whereas Dr. Williams continues to be a highly respected educator and scientist who has exhibited a passion for teaching and dedication to the college and his profession throughout his career. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. John Williams, and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 16th day of January 2018. Dr. Williams, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody that's here. I think she said it all. I couldn't have said it better. I was telling my wife on the way up that I really enjoyed my time here at the college, and I've worn many hats in my life. I can tell you, this is the best job I've ever had, and hated to leave, but felt like it was time for a younger person to step up and see what they could do. So, thank you very much.
Well, we offer up a huge thank you to those that were here and those on your list that were not able to attend today for their work and dedication to the college. Next, we'll move on to announcements where we have an introduction of the interim dean of Allied Health Sciences.
Good morning. This is Chair and Board, Dr. Williams. It's my pleasure to introduce Katie Woods. She will be serving as the interim dean for Allied Health Sciences within the College of Health Sciences. Katie earned her PhD in higher ed through Barre University. She has been with the college for 20 years as an instructor in our Associate of Science and Department of Dean. She also served as the Academic Chair in Department of Dean, and she was previously an interim dean before Rebecca Ludwig joined us. So if you would welcome Katie Woods.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Woods. We'll move to comments, and I'd like to start, if I could, with just saying what a pleasure it's been. I said a couple meetings ago that I was going to make an attempt to get on campus more, and I have been taken up on that by quite a few people, and I appreciate the accountability that you all are holding me to. I got to attend the Harvest Lunch at the downtown campus in late November, and they were kind enough to allow me to say a few words there. I also got to sit in on an intro to computer programming class, Ms. Darlene Westberg's class, and also realized how little I knew about the world of computers, which I'm sure my wife would be able to tell you all, but I found it out myself in that class. But it was a pleasure to be able to sit in and learn a little bit and also see the classroom experience, especially one filled with computers and technology that did not exist when I was in school here. And then there was a class visit to the brewery as well, where we got to go over some microbiology and chemistry foundational things that go on within our industry. Hopefully, it was pretty exciting for the students that were there. I know for us, it was extremely entertaining and fun, and it was a great opportunity to be able to walk some people through our world a little bit and connect it with what the students were learning in class. And then finally, we spent time last week in Tallahassee. I just wanted to say how proud I was of those that represented St. Pete College in Tallahassee. We had a day in meetings and conference with the AFC, and, you know, we continue to get comments from people throughout the state of Florida as to how much they look up to what we're doing here, and how much they respect our college and our institution, and people are looking to us for guidance and leadership and answers to a lot of questions that we have out there. Each year, when it comes to session, there's a bit of uncertainty as to what's going to happen in Tallahassee, and I have nothing but confidence that no matter what directives are handed down, we have the right team and the right leaders to overcome it, to move forward, and figure out ways around it. And that being said, we will work as diligently and as hard as we can to make sure that we protect the interests of this college and other state colleges. I know Dr. Williams already has two or three more trips planned to Tallahassee, lucky her, and I will be going up a few more times as well, but Bridgette was there with us on this trip, as was Mr. Gibbons, and I know, Bill, you spent time up there last year, and Katie, I'm sure you'll be spending plenty of, yeah, plenty of time there as well. It's important for us to build those relationships in Tallahassee and make sure that people are coming to us when they need answers to things, and when they have questions about what language and certain bills mean, and I am very encouraged by the group that we have advocating for this, for this college, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their time up there. And then finally, I think I said finally before, this is actual finally. Yesterday, I got to just run by the MLK Parade in downtown St. Petersburg for, I wish it was longer, it was just 30 or 40 minutes, but I did get a chance to see the SPC float cruise by, and I think that is such an exciting thing for this college that says that we want to connect with the community, to always be out in the community. People see that. I saw people yelling at Dr. Williams yesterday, quite enthusiastically, and the rest of the crew that was on the float. I want to see more of that. I know we already do a lot of that, but those are the exact ways that we can really start to make a difference and connect with those who live right here around us. With that, I'll open it up to board members, if they have any comments this morning.
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, I've been going up to Tallahassee for 20 years since I started on the city council in St. Pete, and one of the things I used to beg the representatives up there is just don't go into session. Just don't go, don't go to meetings, don't go to session, and I used to ask them to take the Hippocratic oath of first do no harm, because whether it's local government or colleges, it seems like they, they don't believe in home rule, and they want to regulate every aspect of what we do, even though we have assembled an incredible team to meet the needs of our community, which they don't know. They, the representatives, they don't, they don't understand our community, but thank you for your leadership. It's tough. Thank you for what you're doing for this college, Mr. Chair, and this board. You've been an incredible leader so far, and I'm just happy to have you there.
Thank you. President, any comments?
Yes. We received an email from Roy Slater on January 10th saying yet again, our Model UN Group received the Outstanding Delegation Award at the National Model UN Nations Conference in Ecuador, and so very proud of our team once again, bringing home the highest award that can be given.
Excellent.
We also had yesterday 50 MLK Day of Service projects going on, actually it was more than 50, going on in Pinellas County as a result of the coordination that we're doing with the MLK Day of Service. 11 outside of that SPC MLK Day of Service work that we have done yesterday. We had the Sounds of Civil Rights Movement last weekend. It was really good, very well attended. Saturday night, we had Chick Corea on the St. Pete campus, which was a fundraiser for us, and we did make money on that. That's one of the first outside of what we do at the Palladium that we're starting to move into a revenue generating process here at the college, and it was sold out. Both shows were sold out. And I want to thank the trustees who are working with us with the legislative issues, and they spent three days with me, all day, working on that, and it takes a lot of work to do that. Chair Stone Cypher was on the AFC Board on a panel and did an excellent job representing the college and workforce and partnerships and what we do there. We could not have done that without him, and so those are just some of the few things that we've done since the last time we met.
Thank you. I do not see any public comments today, so we will move on to the review and approval of minutes. I'd like to take these together if we can, both the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from November 14th and the Trustees Strategic Planning Workshop from December 12th.
Approval vote?
Do you have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And that brings us to monthly reports. Anything today from our board attorney?
Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report, except that I'm pleased to announce that I have now semi-retired from the practice of law. The semi leaves me here, but it does not leave me in the office for the passes, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you.
Yes. And anything from our general counsel, Ms. Gardiner?
Yes, I do have an item to report, Mr. Chair, trustees, Dr. Williams. When we concluded our SACs visit in November, we were not anticipating to have another college-wide onsite review or audit so quickly, but we heard in December that the Department of Education, the Office of Access and Accessibility in Florida would be here in January. They'll be here January 29th through February 2nd. This is a review that's being done on behalf of the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, and it primarily looks at the college activities, employment opportunities, and programs, and it looks for compliance with laws that have to do with nondiscrimination, particularly race, color, national origin, sex, and disability. Looks at Title VI, Title IX, Section 504, which is our statute for student accessibility, Title II of the ADA, and the Florida statutes. So per the statutes, this review is done on a rotating basis over time. We have not had one of these for 15 years, so it was definitely time for them to look to us. We just didn't know it until we heard from them. They look at nine different components, which would include workforce programming, admissions and recruitment, advising, financial aid, overall accessibility and employment practices, and then there's a special focus on career and technical programs per the statute. When they come in for their review, there'll be some initial briefings. There'll be review of our documents, which I believe has already started. There'll be interviewing administrators, faculty, and staff. I understand that there could be as many as 300 people interviewed, but in groups during the period of the week, including the president. The trustees will not be interviewed, but we do appreciate your support with that. There is an appointed steering committee that is chaired by Dr. Misty Kamm, so there's a good group of people that have started work and have continued good work that we've been doing here in that area of civil rights. So we're looking at institutional policies on our website. We're prepared. There'll be some training sessions this week and next on all the campuses and the materials that will be provided. Two of our important training pieces, our ADA 101 and our Title IX training, have been enhanced, plus we've had a number of people that have taken them through the last year, so we have that available as well. Following the site visit, Dr. Williams will get a letter of findings, and all schools do get some feedback, because the process is they provide their feedback through a letter of findings, and then the state team works with us to make sure that we resolve any of the outstanding issues, and then when that's done, reports provided to the Office of Civil Rights. Good thing is it gives us a chance to just confirm that we're compliant, and also just to continue to enhance what we do in the area of civil rights, so appreciate your support. If you have any questions, please let me know.
So this is a normal review, there weren't any purported issues to bring them here, correct?
That's correct. I can confirm that this is just a normal review. It's done on a cycle. All the state colleges are required to have it done, so it's not the result of any findings.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I also have a question. It does not deal with the physical campus and the facilities, it's the programs and accessibility to-
It actually does.
-programs and employment, or it also includes the physical campus?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clearer.
That's okay.
In addition to looking at accessibility in programs and through our policies, they will be on each campus, they'll be looking at accessibility to the buildings, looking at parking lots, looking at bathrooms, handicap spaces, things like that, things of that nature. So the findings will include whatever is pertinent to physical facility on our campuses.
Thank you. Any other questions? We will move on to strategic priorities in a recap of our planning workshop. Ms. Henning, if you could please come up. Was this already a month ago now?
Almost, yeah. Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher, board members, President Williams, college family. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yes. We wanted to provide a recap of the important work we did at the December Strategic Planning Workshop, and also share progress we've made since that time in refining the three visionary pillars. You remember it was with much spirited discussion that we landed on those three pillars, and they were your community, your college, collegiate culture, and economic opportunity. And those were visionary pillars to hold up our vision, our mission, and to really operationalize those things, and we then divided into productive team breakouts where we looked at each of the three pillars that we had identified, and we added descriptors and definitions, and that's where we ended in December. And we've made progress as a team in refining those and wordsmithing those, and what we found were that those statements were very action-oriented. They lended themselves well to accountability, and so when you think of pillars, those are very stationary. When you think of what we were forming as a team, those became more commitments. They were actionable. They were accountability-driven. So we want to offer three wordsmithed revisions, and maybe we look at them in terms of our commitments, our individual commitments, and our college commitments to our community, to our students, and they are community engagement, so our commitment to community engagement, our commitment to academic excellence, our commitment to economic mobility. So that's where we are currently, is kind of refining, wordsmithing these. You can see the original visionary pillar, your community, your college, which we know will really lend itself well to marketing, taglines, and we can really utilize those well, and we want to offer up the commitment, so our commitment to community engagement. This is the synthesized statement. We will invest in the well-being and positive growth of our community by serving as a leader, a convener, and a catalyst for positive change. We will maintain this commitment by creating strong partnerships, participating in civic learning, and cultivating a community of care for our employees and those we serve. So you can see the new statement we'd like to bring forward for your consideration, board members. So that is commitment one. And you can see the visionary pillar we landed on in December above, which is collegiate culture, and as we looked at refining that, it really came to a commitment to academic excellence. And the statement that we synthesized is we will provide a high-quality education for our students by creating an innovative and engaging learning environment within a supportive collegiate culture. So you can see kind of the next iteration for this commitment statement. So that is commitment two. And then commitment three. We moved from economic opportunity and the descriptors, the golden nuggets there, into a commitment of economic mobility, and the statement that we offer is we will provide opportunities for our students to be prepared for high-wage, high-need careers and professional growth, which will contribute to their economic success and improve the quality of life within the community, as well as assist in ending generational cycles of poverty. So those three commitments are what we want to offer to the board this morning for your consideration. I'll pause to see if you have any questions or if you have any comments related to the next iteration. What do you think?
I will just say, congratulations on including academics. I was very frustrated by that process that day. I'm like, we're at college!
It's in there.
And I think you did a fantastic job of calling down lots and lots of information and opinion, so I'm with you. I love it.
Thank you, Trustee Bello.
To me, this captures the big ideas of what we were trying to gather up. It's not easy to put all of these things into one sentence or two sentences. The only thing I would perhaps change, and I don't know, just in the community engagement piece, we say positive growth and positive change in the same sentence. I just wonder if we can either reword that or take one of the positives out. I just, and maybe I'm looking at it too closely, but that would be my only response.
And I am positive we can do that. Any other comments?
Anyone else?
All right, well, thank you. Our next steps then are to embark upon a two-to-three-month strategic planning process, and that will be led by Dr. Jesse Coraggio, and it will be an enterprise-wide opportunity for us to, around these three commitments, to really develop solid goals to move us to action, strategies, tactical action steps, that will include all of our college family, kind of a cross-functional approach to a strategic planning process. So with your permission, we will embark right after this meeting, potentially. So, with your permission, we will embark right after this meeting, potentially.
Any other questions or comments from the board? We just want to thank you for your time on this.
Thank you.
And I'm curious, before you step down from the podium, what was the process to generally to come up with these three and kind of wordsmith what we came up with at the meeting? Was there a large group of people that-
No. At the beginning, because we only had, like, six days after the break to pull this together and bring it back to you in time, we had a small group that looked at it, and then it was shared with the provosts, deans, faculty, leadership. I think Shannon, did you? I don't see Shannon here, but Shannon saw it, and then they all added to it, and then we brought it back.
Great. Thank you so much.
Very collaborative. Thank you.
And it looks like there's an action needed for this item, so I would ask if there's a motion to allow for the strategic planning team to move forward with the three pillars-
With the change.
With the change in the positive words. Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you very much. Okay. We will move on to spring 2018 enrollment summary.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. Despite the cold weather outside, the spring term is fully underway. We began classes last week, and Dr. Coraggio and I are here this morning to give you a briefing on where we are with our enrollment for the spring term. Before we do so, we just want to remind the board that we budgeted for a minus 3.5% enrollment change year-over-year in 2017, 18. And this shows where we actually landed in the fall 2017 term compared to fall 2016. So, despite being, planning for a 3.5% decrease, we actually ended up only being down minus 2.9%, so that 6 tenths of 1% better than what we had hoped for.
Already up.
Already up. This is a trend line that shows our enrollment cycle for the spring term. We start registration at the end of October, goes all the way up. We're still enrolling students for the spring term, as a matter of fact, right now. The purpose of showing you this trend line is that typically, the lines for each year are in parallel. And you can see that shortly after we began registration for spring, by the first of November, we were down minus 4.8%. And that spread to the middle of November to being down 8.5% or 8.1% and then 10.5% around the first of December. So, that was cause for concern. We were checking our systems, making sure we didn't have system issue. The feedback that we were getting from the classroom through the deans, up through the deans and the provosts, was that our students were feeling the stress of Hurricane Irma. And they were not registering like they normally do when registration opens for the spring term. They wanted to wait until the term was over. If you recall, we lost a week of instruction, and we did not expand the length of the term. So, the students were feeling the stress of that, and you're going to see some data in a few minutes from a report by Dr. Coraggio, that they actually fared very well. But they weren't thinking about the next semester. They just wanted to get through the fall semester. Now, you can see where we were as of Friday. We ended up being down minus 3.6%. So, once the grades for the fall term hit our system, they saw those grades, they took a little breather, they began to register like they normally do, and those that delayed started to pick up those registrations. So, you can see minus 3.6%. We budgeted to be down minus 3.5%, so we're off by 1/10th of 1% from what we budgeted. This shows head count, we're actually down a little bit further. We have fewer students, 26,467 enrolled as of Friday compared to 27,789 prior year. But SSH is what we're funded on. We're down minus 3.6%. These numbers exclude our open campus enrollment, which is the courses that we teach dual students, dual-credit students in the high schools, which is not fundable.
Let me just, real quick, when does registration begin?
I think it's the last week of October for spring semester.
Okay.
This shows student semester hours, lower division and upper division. You can see lower division were minus 3.8%, upper division were minus 2.2%, which is only the second time in history that our baccalaureate program enrollment has actually been lower than the prior year. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Coraggio.
So, I do want to share overall, before we dive into the baccalaureate numbers, I looked at the numbers just this morning. We're actually only down 3.4% as of, actually, end of day yesterday. So, given that we budgeted to be down 3.5, it's pretty close, and we do, are hopeful that we can do some gains on that. As Dr. Renard mentioned, we have registration that continues for our different session types as we go into the term. I want to go into baccalaureate. Baccalaureate you saw was down 2.2. I looked this morning, it's improved slightly. It's actually down 1.9 as of this morning. We had some changing around of some of the programs, as we'll see there. One of the things I was concerned about is, given the hurricane, I was a little worried about students taking fewer classes. And that did happen in some of the programs that we see up there, but overall, for all baccalaureate programs, it was about the same amount of classes as they took on average as they did the prior year. What we did see some differences was in a few programs, a few of those are near the top there. School of Policy, Ethics and Legal Studies, we actually saw students take fewer classes, and we showed an increase. Part of the reason for that increase of 20.5% was, in that particular program, they moved to a different campus, or the majority of classes is a single campus. They also started offering more online programs, more online classes, and that resulted in an increase. We see the same thing for College of Education. College of Education had been down, actually, if you remember, the last couple of years, we've been seeing declines in College of Education, a lot that had to do with some of the testing and students getting into the programs. We created a new program in College of Education that really focused on community college leadership. The result of that program and some online enrollment associated with it is a 7% increase in College of Education. On the other side, we see some declines down in some programs. School Veterinary Technology has about the same number of students, but we do see some differences there in terms of enrollment. College of Nursing also is one of the three programs, four programs that we have that had students take fewer classes. We believe this is a result of some of the change in focus in the hospitals. We mentioned that at some of the earlier meetings. There was a strong focus to make sure all nurses had BSN or the four-year degree. We did see enrollment tick up as a result of that. Now, we're starting to see the hospitals back off of that a little bit. That isn't necessarily resulting in students not taking classes, but they're not in such a hurry to finish with the baccalaureate program, so we're seeing a decline overall enrollment for those programs. For enrollment type, you can see we are showing declines across the three types. The smallest decline we're seeing is in our continuing students, down 3.5%. We're down about 12.4% in our new students. This includes first-time-in-college students, the first time they're coming to the college after graduating high school, also includes new students who would be first-time transfers and some of the non-degree seeking students in that group. And readmit, we're down 10%. Those are students who have been away from the college three or more semesters, essentially about a year, and are returning. We're seeing a decline in that area as well. For first-time-in-college head count and SSH, as of the date that the numbers were pulled last week, head count is down 6.9%. And first-time-in-college student semester hours is down 6.1%. And then, we look at first-time-in-college ethnicity, we see some slight increases when we look at our black African-American students that are up 1.3%. Hispanic is up 1.1. Our new incoming white students, first-time-in-college, is down 14.8%. And you see overall, we're down 6.9% term-over-term. When we look at modality, and this is a focus on student modality as opposed to course modality, so the first group represents students that are only taking for face-to-face classes. That's down 12.6%. Over on the right, we see students who are only taking online classes. That's actually increased, so that's up 3.9%. And those students are taking some combination of face-to-face and online, which is a large percentage of students. They're going to be in the middle there, and they're currently down 6.1%. When we look at ethnicity for all students, so this isn't just first-time-in-college, but all students that we're looking at, we're going to see our black African-American students, while they were up for FTIC, are actually down 2.5% for the general population. Asian students are up 0.7%. Hispanic students have the most growth, they're up 3.3%. And again, we see the decline for our white students, they're down 7.4%. We look at the information in terms of gender. We can see female is down 3.2% and male is down 7.3%. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Renard to continue sharing some of our demographic information.
If we look at enrollment by age categories, 18 and under is up 4.8%. You might recall from the fall term that we had a 5% increase in our FTIC, first-time-in-college cohort for fall. You're going to see some persistence data in a moment, and I think that this is a carryover. You'll note that that's the only age category that's actually up. All other age categories are down. To me, this speaks to an improved economy. When I looked at some data, the economy year-over-year, November year-over-year has improved another, unemployment rate has improved another 0.9%, and I think these are the students that are This looks at full-time versus part-time, nearly flat with our full-time population and a decline of 6.7% in part-time students. This looks at the FTIC persistence rate from fall to spring. So, again, you see the cohorts there. We had a 5% increase in FTIC year-over-year. We actually retained more of those students this spring than we did a year ago, 80.8% of them compared to 79.1% of them. Did some research, looking at national averages, the average across the nation seems to be in the 78% FTIC fall-to-spring persistence rate. This data is from Mike Bennett in the Financial Assistance Services Department. It shows the number of students receiving various types of financial aid and the amounts, total amounts. The data for the 2016-17 information in blue is the full entire year, whereas 17-18 data is as of last week. You can see, I want to call your attention to the other grants, the amounts there. We were fortunate enough to receive an additional $4 million in what's called FSAG grant money in the fall term. Most schools in Florida received an increase, not all, but most did, and we were able to award an additional 700 students that particular type of state aid. You'll note the scholarship numbers are down. We expect those to go up when we start to flatten out and show the complete year-to-year data in the summer. So, noteworthy observations, just to recap, overall SSH is minus 3.6%. That's as of Friday, but as Dr. Coraggio mentioned, that as of today, it's 3.4%. Overall head count is minus 4.8%. Baccalaureate student semester hours is minus 2.2%. In the last 40 days of registration, we were able to close that gap from a negative 10.5% to a negative 3.6%. Our first-time-in-college enrollment is minus 6.1%, although first-time-in-college African-American students is slightly up. We're seeing some positive gains in Policy, Ethics and Legal Studies, Health Sciences and Education. Online enrollment is up 3.9% in head count and 2.7% in student semester hours. Concern is the Caucasian white students being down as sharply as they are, minus 7.4%. So, we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and look at that. The only growth that we saw in terms of looking at student by age is the 18 and under. And we did see an increase in our persistent, fall-to-spring persistence rate for FTIC of 1.7%. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Cooper, who's going to share some next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Renard. Just wanted to share with you that we've been having a number of conversations after last year sunsetting a number of programs. We wanted to look at our program mix and do we have the right mix? And so, the provosts and the deans and a number of us came together to have a couple of discussions in this regard, and we now have the elementary education online. We're hoping to reach people outside of Pinellas County who do not have a school near them that offers this type of degree. We've also expanded our education studies and community leadership online, and that is growing in leaps and bounds. We're very pleased to see that. We're in the process of looking at an expansion of our EMT program to the Tarpon Springs campus. We're in the process of identifying funding and awaiting an accreditation visit to approve the site. We have begun the 911 dispatcher program, which is a clock-hour program at our all-state center, or it will begin shortly, but students have already registered for that. We're very excited that in the manufacturing area, under engineering technology, the latest and greatest are associated with Megatronics, robotics and simulation. We have received, we've been informed that we've received the statewide grant for this particular project, so this will allow us to hire a faculty member as well as move that program forward at the Clearwater Campus. We will be having discussions with some of the representatives from Duke Energy and Dr. Williams this week with our program leads in regards to setting up a possible lineman apprenticeship program. That would also be a clock-hour program for students. We also know that there are discussions going on currently within the state to set up a possible consortium to do more of this kind of training throughout the state of Florida. We don't want to wait on that. We want to be a leader and a convener, so we're going to move forward accordingly. We have, we will be adding the sports management subplan to our management and organizational leadership in the fall of 2018 within our College of Business. And we are also exploring the possibility of a school of financial services within the College of Business. We believe that this is, may present an opportunity to some of the companies in the area who are interested in training programs for financial advisors, financial planning, forensic accounting or money laundering, as well as risk management or insurance. We've already had the banking industry approach us with donations for scholarships as well as the insurance agencies. So, we feel that this would be something that would give more notoriety to things we already have in place. We would also have non-credit as well as credit options, and it's repackaging it to make it something that others may be, we think, very interested in. Other things that we're looking at is that we want to make sure that how we are scheduling classes fits with our footprint, so we may want to have an external consultant come in and review that with us. Sometimes, you need to take a step back and someone from the outside to take a look in. We also want to make sure that our onboarding and registration process, that we haven inadvertently in wanting to get all the information, all at the very beginning, put some maybe roadblocks in students' paths, so there's opportunity for review there. We're also piloting a new 10-week session during this spring. This will allow students who have come late, give them opportunity to prepare, do their SMART stored orientation before their actual classes start, and so we believe that we'll continue to see some growth in our enrollment based on that. We have had a wonderful conversation with Pinellas County Schools as well as Pinellas Technical College, and what we want to do is build similar pathways for the students in high schools that, similar to what we've done with the FUSE program with USF and the IGNITE program with FMU. We feel that then, students, while they're still in high school, can find out about what credits they can already learn, earn, excuse me, through articulation agreements with their career and academic communities, and then some additional credits with dual enrollment. So, they could come to us with as much as a semester, semester and a half already completed. We also want to show the path through Pinellas Technical College, because there might be opportunities for that route, depending upon what particular program they're interested in. And so, we feel that this is a good opportunity to take the academic pathways now down into the high schools and show students the path to us through Pinellas Technical College or directly to us, depending upon the program. We're continuing and will continue to review our program offerings to make sure that we are leading to livable wage jobs for our students, and we're very excited about being awarded the National Science Foundation- And we're very excited about being awarded the National Science Foundation Bridges to Baccalaureate Degree Grant. And this will be, this will allow us to expand our STEM-related AA transfer services to students. Any questions?
Thank you all so much. Just a couple of things. What is the persistence rate? Can you define, what are we measuring there? What does that mean?
We're measuring the number of students that were in a particular cohort, in this case, the first time in college for fall. How many of them are registered for spring?
So it's the same students?
Same students.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be sure. Did we see any, based on the numbers relative to the uptick in enrollment by our Latino students, did we see any impact on the free tuition offered to Puerto Rican residents after IRMA? Or was there any intentional or unintentional acknowledgement and incorporation of those students into enrollment? Just out of curiosity.
We were asked by the chancellor to report how many students came to us from Puerto Rico, and I think we only had eight. Yeah, I think most of the students are in central Florida, Orlando.
Interesting. In Miami? I didn't know what our impact, what the impact would be to us. Yeah, interesting. I was glad that you pointed out the unemployment rate and how that impacts our enrollment numbers. I think it would be interesting, I'll take Ms. Bellows' torch here. From a marketing standpoint, and I don't know how intentionally we do this, but obviously when the unemployment rate is down, we should be focusing on those ways to step up within the jobs that people have. So the unemployment rate is down generally because of entry-level jobs become available, not because of high-level jobs. And so, you know, how are we intentionally reaching out to some of those employer partners that we can then offer the right programs to keep those people employed? So they understand that just because they have a job, doesn't mean they should no longer consider St. Pete College, but that because they have a job, now we have an, they have an opportunity to go to the next step. That, I think, truly would help us impact then our economic mobility pillar and goal as well, so.
And so we are in the midst of revamping our marketing strategy altogether. I believe that there's a lot more that we can do that we are not doing. And so we'll be bringing back the report on how that's going to be restructured. I think your idea of building on the current employment, so it's, let's say I'm working at a hospital in housekeeping. And so I have a job, but I still don't have enough to meet my needs. We should be marketing to say, okay, you're working here, come to SPC, you can do this, or come and do that. So there's more work that we need to do in our marketing strategy all the way around.
Sure, and I don't mean to get into the weeds on that. I just thought it was an interesting observation that I think we need, you know, clearly, education is always, appears to be up when the economy is bad. Because people are looking for things to do. And so now that the economy appears, at least from an unemployment level, to be so low from the unemployment level, I think we should take this opportunity to really reach out. Fine, one of my other questions was, you talked about the scholarships and the uptick of scholarship dollars. And I was curious if we have the numbers or if we track, how many of our students may drop out or not re-enroll because of a loss of scholarship? And if we identify those students and how we might bridge that gap? Is that, obviously, many of them may have other extenuating circumstances as to why they don't re-enroll, but if that's one of those reasons, if there's a way we can work with the foundation to identify those students?
We'd have to bring that information back. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can do that.
We do reach out to students after the fact.
After they've lost their scholarship or after they've?
After they have not withdrawn. But one of the things that we've done is monitored student progress regularly. And unfortunately, some of those students who leave, once they leave, they don't, you know, take a call. And you're trying to say, do you have enough money? But we do have the ability to look at data to see who may be running out of scholarship money, who may not be running out. Then you're going to find out from the foundation that a lot of students just don't take the time to apply for scholarships. And so we're spending a lot of time trying to get them, can you please apply for scholarships? We have students with a lot of personal issues at home. And then we have some who may feel that they are just not engaged yet on campus. And so it's a, it's a large number of different things.
I got a, just a comment, observation. Thank you for the report. You've done a lot of work in this. I'm not overly happy with the numbers. I think we've stopped the bleeding, so that's the first thing we have to do. But we are so far past SPJC that I want to see more of a transition from the associates to the baccalaureate. In spite of what Tallahassee wants to do, there's tremendous value in our baccalaureate programs. You fine-tune that. And I think now is a perfect time, as we go from vision and commitment to the strategic planning, to do all of that strategic planning within kind of, not the confines, but with this data in mind to see how we get these numbers on a positive. There's, you know, from the computer information or technology to the BSN, and there's no reason why we're trending down. And those need to come up. I don't know if it's, if it's, how we incentivize those getting an associate's to go into a bachelor's. But just that culture of advancement. You've got your associates. Now's a great time without, without taking time off. Now's the best time in your life because you already know how to do it. You already know how to be a student and go to class. Now's the greatest time to continue on and get that, to get that bachelor's. I love the FUSE program, and as much as I love USF and FAM, I want St. Pete College to be my favorite FUSE. And I want to help them transition to come back and get that baccalaureate. So I think now is the perfect time, as we're going through the strategic planning, to look at these numbers and to do, to come up with that plan to trend up. But thank you for your work.
I just wanted to add that I would have been remiss. I started into some of my technical questions before saying that, you know, like September, October, I think we challenged the staff to say, what are we doing to recruit more students? And to not be a self-fulfilling prophecy with this estimate have dropped. And so I want to commend you all. I know that there's, you all reported back in October and November some very intentional strategies on high school campuses, reaching out to students. And so obviously, that, those things are working. It's not as bad as we thought it would be. And so I did not want to pass the opportunity by to say thank you and acknowledge what has been done, which is truly great, so.
Yeah, and budgeting, budgeting for a decline is not a goal. But I mean, you, but to do better than that, no, that's, there's a lot. I don't, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to spike, but just positive, positive growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, and I think the academic pathway articulation effort with high schools and with Pinellas Tech is a great idea. And I love, I love hearing that we're going to be doing more in that area. My only question was with the, you know, we see a continued increase in the online offerings, 3.9% this time around. Do we think that's because of scheduling issues with face-to-face classes? Or is that just a part of the progression of where we are as a society, that people are just taking more online classes? Or is it a mix of both?
I think we have a number of things, factors affecting that. We have a very large footprint, and so in trying to spread that out to multiple campuses, there may not be as many options on every campus. So one of the things I think that we need to do is to review, are we going to have certain programs on certain campuses so that we don't build the expectation with students that you can get anything and everything here? I think that's one thing. Another thing is, is that if more people are achieving jobs, then the online environment might be the only way that they can continue their education because they don't have to worry about transportation, they don't have to worry about time of day, they don't have to worry about daycare. And so I think that's playing into it as well. And I'll let, see if any of my other DPs have any other thoughts.
I will share. You noticed the decline that we saw in first time in college students? So we were down about 6%. I specifically looked at first time in college students taking online courses. We're actually up 15% there. So I think it is a combination of both. You know, I think there is a trend towards online, but I think there's things that we have to take a hard look at what we have in terms of schedule and see what we can do to make sure if somebody wants to take it in face-to-face that we have every opportunity for them to do so. So I think it's a little bit of both that we have to look at.
And that's why we have the idea of having an outside person come in and look at our schedule. I mean, we have almost like nine or 11 learning sites, and we're trying to have classes at all those sites. It's very difficult to do that. So as we go into phase two of looking at our physical footprint, we shared with you, we would bring back a report of what our opportunities are there and where we need to go and what we need to do. So we'll be bringing that back as well. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Looks like Dr. Coraggio. Oh, nope. Are you staying with us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Good morning again. So as Dr. Renard mentioned earlier, we had some conversation. I think we were able to do some things with the success rate that I really want to take time to show the board. I think we were, you can see we were quite nervous when we were down 10% for registration at a point. We've never, since I've been here in the last 11, 12 years, I've never seen us down that far at any time during the registration period. So that was nervous. We did a lot of hard work to bring that number up that you saw. The other thing we were concerned about, and again, it was the impact of the hurricane, is where we're going to end up in terms of success rates. Because for the same reason the students weren't returning to register for classes, we were really concerned we were going to have a lot of students withdraw from classes. We're going to have a lot of students that were unsuccessful in their courses as a result of losing the time when we were closed as a result of the hurricane. So before we get started on that, I just want to kind of remind everybody of how we calculate course success rate. So this is one of our kind of leading metrics that we focus on in terms of student performance. The idea if we can increase their success in the courses, that would ultimately result in their ability to complete at a higher rate. So essentially, the calculation is ABC grades over all other grades. There's a few technical differences there, but in essence, that's what we're looking at in terms of the calculation. And you can see the last three fall terms. So fall 2015, we were 78.8. Fall 2016, we had dropped down to 77.8. And then fall 2017, we recovered some of that and we were up over where we were 2016. We're going to see that trend kind of continue as we break down into the data. This is some of the information I was just sharing. This is our withdrawal. So this is our withdrawal number for 2016 and our withdrawal for 2017. We were actually down 9.7% down in the number of withdrawals that we had this fall compared to last fall. About 500 withdrawals less. And I really want to give kudos to our faculty. You know, we asked them to be, to work really hard, to work with the students as a result of the impact of the hurricane, and you can see they were successful for that. I also want to thank our support staff that we have on our campuses and student services because they also stepped up to help make a difference when it came in this time of crisis. And I really think this is about the community coherent model that Dr. Williams is bringing forward. We really reacted to that and helped our students be successful. This is kind of a timeline. Now, this data is going to look at years as opposed to semesters. So this starts in the academic year of 2010-11. You can see our success rate at that time for all students was 74%. And that line has continued to increase year over year. So this past full year that we have, 16-17, we were at college-wide 78.8%. So you can see we were almost a 5% increase in course success rates across the entire college. This is overall student comparison. We're back to looking specifically at terms. So this is fall '15, fall '16, fall '17 for all students. We have, the last two columns represent the two-year difference and then the one-year difference. So as I mentioned, there was a decrease when we went from '15 to '16. We've recovered some of that, but we haven't recovered at all. So you can see we were down 0.7% when we looked at the, two years ago, but we're up 0.3% when we make that comparison to where we were from '16 to '17. Just going right down the line there, you can see some differences, slight upticks for male and female students. Black African-American students were down 0.3%. For overall, Hispanic-Latino was flat and white was up slightly. And then when we break down into male ethnicity, we'll see black African-American males were down 2.6%. Hispanic-Latino males were up 0.9, and white males were up 0.7. Now, this is going to focus on first time in college-only students. Again, these are the students who come to the college immediately after high school. So that could include dual enrollment students, but it's the semester after they've graduated high school. First time in college students overall were up 0.8%. Slightly higher for male students compared to female students. Black African-American students, excuse me, were up 1.6. Hispanic-Latino had the largest gain of the ethnic categories at 2.8. And then we go down into the male ethnic groups. Black African-American male students were flat. Hispanic-Latino males were up 2.6, and white males were also flat. I'm going to break down into a couple of course types. We're going to look at developmental courses, and then we're going to look at gateway courses. We'll start with developmental. Developmental students seem to have the toughest time last semester, and we believe this is impactful of what we're seeing in terms of the hurricane and the number of students who are taking our recommendations by going into remedial courses. So real quickly, the numbers, you see they're down 2.5%. Males were down 7.2%. Why, we saw a slight increase for female students. Our black African-American students were down 5.2. Hispanic-Latino, 1.1. White students were flat. Our largest decline of all the success rates was with our black African-American male students. They were down 14.5% compared to Hispanic-Latino of 4.2, and white males were down 5.4. So one of the big impacts for the remedial courses is when we had the hurricane, we were closed a number of days, and this impacted the number of days they were actually in class. The second thing that's impacting this is we're going to take a little bit and show our prediction model and how students take our recommendations in terms of going to remedial education. That number has continued to decline. So when we have the students that typically would go into remedial education, we're seeing a smaller percentage actually stay there. The majority of students are jumping to gateway courses. Now, that can be good if they're successful in the gateway courses, but it dramatically changed the ability level and the number of students that are actually taking these developmental courses. It continues to shrink, and a lot of this has to do with the Senate Bill 1720 a few years ago. In gateway courses, though, we showed improvement semester over semester. You'll see overall, we were up 1.3% for FTIC students. Male students were up 3.1%. Black African-American students were up 3.8%. Hispanic-Latino were up 1.9. And then for the male ethnic numbers, we can see black African-American males here were up 5.6% and then about 3% for both Hispanic-Latino and white male students. So talking a little bit more about Senate Bill 1720, what we did in response to that, what that legislation did is basically say, if you graduated high school after 2007, you now had the option of whether you wanted to participate in a college placement test or regardless of those results, an option of whether you wanted to go into remedial education. So as you may remember in some of our former presentations, we reacted right away. We created a prediction model. The prediction model was based on their high school performance, and we categorized them into three categories: likely college-ready, dev-ed recommended, and dev-ed strongly recommended. We also required that all of these students, which we refer to as flex placement students or exempt students by the state statute language, to actually have to meet with an advisor, see with their prediction model, and make a determination on whether or not they wanted to accept our recommendation. These are the success rates. So I'm going to pull these up one at a time. There's actually three areas, one for math, one for reading, and one for writing. And then when you look across the top, you'll see all students in terms of, all FTIC students for success rate, likely college-ready, dev-ed recommended, and dev-ed strongly recommended. So to kind of read how this goes, Math 1033 and Math 1100 are entry-level gateway courses. So that would be intermediate algebra and quantitative math, the two pathways we have for students coming in, versus our developmental education courses. You can see overall, 59.8% for those students going into those gateway courses, 54.4% for those going into developmental ed courses. When we look at likely college-ready, these are students that we said we believe, based on your high school performance, that you can be successful in a gateway course. You can see their success rate, 64.4%. There's 600 and There's 634 students that chose that. The 27 that didn't, and more than likely they weren't comfortable with math, made a decision to stay with the developmental ed course, their success rate was 63%. The next two columns, you'll see I have a column highlighted yellow. That's basically the students who didn't take our recommendation. And the percentage that exists above that column is the percentage of students that actually take, took our recommendation. Not that long ago, going back a couple of semesters back, about half the students that we said should go into remedial math took our recommendation. You can see that's about half of what it used to be. So, it's about 23.6% for dev-ed recommended and 26.5% for dev-ed strongly recommended. And in the parentheses, you can actually see the count of grades and in essence, students. So, success rate here, you'll see, is pretty close and I believe that has a lot to do with the percentage of students that are jumping up that really aren't ready to go to gateway but are making that decision to do so. And the same thing for dev-ed strongly recommended, pretty flat. Now, we'll look at the other two areas, some reading and writing, and you can see the percentages get even smaller. So, it was about 30% that took our recommendations for writing, that's about half of that number at 15%. It was about 10% that took our recommendation for reading. Again, we're about half that percentage. So, very small amounts of students that now are making the choice to go into remedial education. The vast majority are going to gateway classes and that's impacting. So, you think of the ability level, all those students that feel they have a better ability are taking the jump. That's really changing the ability level of what's left in their remedial courses and increasing the width of ability level in gateway courses. The good news is we actually had the success rate in those gateway courses increase as a result of it. The bad news is we've seen the decline in the remedial courses and we need to figure out how to continue to support those students and help them. So, quick noteworthy observations. Overall, the college success rate increased .3% this fall and 4.8% since '10-11, looking at those annual numbers. Overall, the college has decreased the number of course withdrawals by nearly 10% or about 500 withdrawals. FTIC students had a .8% increase this last fall. They had a 2.5% decrease in developmental education. Female students for the exception, they were actually up 1.1%. FTI students had a 1.3% increase in gateway course success. The African-American male students led the way with a 5.6% increase. And in most cases, flex placement students perform better or the same when taking the college recommended course, even though very few are doing so as we go forward. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? How are we, do we currently encourage the students to take these developmental classes in any way? Is there a...
Yeah, so they're required to meet with an advisor. An advisor walks them through what our recommendations are. So, we bring all their transcript information and we decide in all three categories whether they're likely college-ready, dev-ed recommended, or dev-ed strongly recommended. The advisor recommends them to take our recommendation and will often give them success rate. So, we'll say for students who don't take our college recommendation, this is generally how successful they are when they go to gateway courses. So, we provide them with that data to help put that evidence in front of them.
All right, I guess I'll rephrase the question. Are there any incentives offered to, to make sure that they're looking at that option as a viable one?
Beyond us sharing the data and success, there's not anything like financially that we're doing to incentivize them to participate in those courses?
What it looks like is that the students who graduated from a Pinellas County High School from 2007 and to current are choosing to go gateway. The students who are in developmental education are students who graduated in 1981 or 1990 or, or the older student who had, may not have been in school for a while. And so, the faculty will have a deeper dig to bring them up, to get them prepared. So, it's really a different population. As Dr. Coraggio mentioned, a lot of our students who receive the predictive model, who can choose, they go right in the gateway. But those who cannot, who graduated from 2006 and backwards, they don't have that choice. Or those who receive a GED, they don't have that choice. They have to take the developmental ed course. And so, that makes it challenging for them to start anew and to go backwards to go forward. So, it is a tough piece. Most of them are not your younger students who graduate from 2007 and current.
So, one of the things we're doing support-wise, and I know that they brought the QEP forward to you and we piloted this fall, those students will be in it for a year, so their first semester's completed in the fall and they'll continue into the spring. That is designed specifically for these students. So, these are students that didn't take at least one of the college recommendations. They're invited to participate in. Now, it's still optional. They can still choose to participate or not. One of the things that we've noticed, though, even in the first semester, is how much needs these students really have. So, the two faculty that taught those neighborhood success, that was their big aha for fall, is these students need a lot of support and a lot of help. And these are the ones that are actually choosing to participate in what the college has to offer versus those that aren't.
When we do that deep dive with the students and explain to them the success rates, is the financial aspect also layered in? Because I could see that many of our students have a set amount of money that they're willing to invest. And so, in their mind, they may be making a choice based on their...
The financial, one last course, time.
The financial aspect, if I take these three classes at the beginning, I'm going to run out of money before I finish my degree?
We can, we can add that into the dialogue and I think the realization is what happens if you're not successful. You know, so I go ahead and make the jump and then I don't, not successful, now I have to take the class again, but you know, if you jump backwards and say, oh, you're right, I should have taken the dev-ed course, now I'm even further behind because now I have to take that, you know.
I'm just constantly surprised when I speak to people in school today, how almost without fail, the financial aspect of how many classes they're taking is part of the conversation. And I feel like 20 years ago, it kind of was what it was. You knew how many classes you had to take and you'd figure out how to pay for it as you went along. But I feel like in today's world, it's a daily conversation about how they're paying for each and every class. So, I think that would be an interesting thing to layer on. And then, from a resources standpoint, to your point, is that an opportunity then to reach out to some of our community partners or grants to say, hey, we have scholarships for the full AA program, but those scholarships will run out if they then take these four classes on the front end or five classes on the front end. So, is there a funding mechanism available to underwrite those upfront classes?
Dr. Cooper was just sharing, we're really focusing on the financial pathway in addition to academic pathway to kind of overlap that. The other side of that, though, is if they go in these gateway classes and they are successful, like if we can continue to improve those support systems and they jump to the gateway course, they're ahead.
Yeah.
So, you know, when I see those percentages close the way they are, it suggests to me that people, they are being successful and they do make the jump, but we have to continue figuring out how to increase that ability. So, when they do that, because then they're not going to be even the semester behind, you know, they're accelerated.
Thank you, Dr. Coraggio.
Thank you.
Okay, budget and finance. Mr. Brian Miles and Ms. Jeanette Hines, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members, and Dr. Williams. This morning's report will be on the first half of our fiscal year, so we'll get to see where we landed in the first half of the year. First, looking at our student tuition and our student fees, this line item also includes our lab fees, our learning support access fees, our distance learning fees. We budgeted at $61.2 million. At the end of the six months, we were at $49.5 million, which is 80%, about 81% of our budget. I also wanted to point out just the tuition piece of this line item, just looking at, we budgeted about 51% of, $51 million of tuition and where we've come in. This chart includes our fall where you heard earlier, Dr. Coraggio and Dr. Renard spoke on that we were .6% higher than what we targeted. It also includes where we were last week in our spring, which was about a negative .1%. And then, includes our summer session where we're flat to budget. So, you'll see here, we're at $50.9 million, which is a little bit more than what we budgeted, at about $66,000 or $67,000 more. Next, our state funding at $71.7 million. We will see in February, we will begin to receive our lottery portions, which is divided out over five months. We'll receive about $2.8 million a month and that will total about $14.2 million. Our next section I also wanted to point out, in our fund transfers, you see in comparison to our prior year to our current year, we're about $2.2 million more in actuals. This is because we've actually done the journal entries early to recognize some of the revenue for, from our auxiliary fund. And overall, in our revenue, we're at $82.6 million at about 57% of the budget. Next, we'll look at our expenditures for personnel and benefits. Again, this is half of the year. We're approximately half, 50% of expended in our personnel and our benefits. In comparison to last year, we're the same. The difference here that I want to point out is that we're $5 million less budget this year than we had last year and we've still expended about $1.8 million less. Now, looking at our current expense and our capital, together, combined, we're about $1.7 million. We've spent less than the prior year. Overall, our revenue over our expense, we're at $12.9 million. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to administrative matters and we have an action item for the personnel report. Are there any questions or do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. And we'll move to Part A of the consent agenda, which is Collegiate High School replication location with Ms. Metz.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams.
Morning.
I'm Starla Metz, the Principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning to share the committee's recommendation of either the Clearwater or Tarpon Springs campus to house St. Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas. The committee looked at three major factors in determining the recommendation. Student interest, and I'll be sharing some data on the next few slides. The costs associated with renovation and relocation, and that came in at $300,000 regardless of the campus. Those costs will be paid for out of the current collegiate high school reserves. And then, finally, the early college and the collegiate high school being housed on the same campus. In looking at placing both the early college and the collegiate high school on the same campus, keep in mind that we attract different students. The early college program serves students in grades 11 and 12. These students wish to accelerate their learning, but they wish to remain at their current school for all of their extracurricular activities. Students in the collegiate high school program are in grades 10 through 12. These students wish to come to the collegiate high school, often for the small learning environment, and leave their current school. Both groups of students simultaneously earn a high school diploma and an associate in arts degree. I really feel confident that either campus selected can house both programs and here's why. Both the early college and the collegiate high school have significant wait lists. In addition, we also have early registration, which means that our students' course needs will be met regardless of the campus we house the collegiate high school on. I feel confident that we'll continue to fill and have extensive wait lists for both programs. If we take a look at the data here for student interest, the first table shows us the information data for attendance at a collegiate high school information session for 2017. We define South County as St. Petersburg and they have the highest number of attendees. Mid County is Clearwater, Seminole, Largo, Pinellas Park area. And then, North County would be Palm Harbor, Dunedin, Tarpon, Eastlake. When you look at that data, though, keep in mind that the 10th graders do not drive and so, parents have to transport those students all the way down to the St. Petersburg's campus. So, while it shows that North County does not have as many students attending an information session, it is because of the distance between the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus and North Pinellas. And so, there, again, it kind of underscores the need for a second collegiate high school in North Pinellas. If we take a look at the next table, we're taking a look at students who are currently enrolled in the collegiate high school on the first line that reside in North Pinellas. And you can see that Clearwater is the highest number, followed by Palm Harbor. And then, last week, we had our Clearwater information session and so, we gathered that data. And you can see that we had 37 students who reside in Clearwater, again, followed by 19 students in Palm Harbor. This slide takes a look at waitlist data. The first table takes a look at students who were on the waitlist for the collegiate high school at the beginning of the year. Keep in mind that we dissolve that waitlist once school begins at the collegiate high school. So, we had nine students that reside in Clearwater, again, followed by Palm Harbor with seven. If you take a look at the early college program waitlist data, Clearwater had the highest number, was 41, followed by Tarpon Springs and then Seminole. And then, finally, if we look at the early admissions program waitlist data, those are students in grade 12. We had six at the Clearwater campus, four for Tarpon, and zero at Seminole. So, overall, it seems as though we have a few, a little more interest at the Clearwater campus, but great interest also in North Pinellas. Then, we took a look at comparing the two sites for potential advantages and disadvantages. If we take a look at the Clearwater campus, renovation costs are the same as Tarpon. The building layout is a little more conducive to housing the collegiate high school. They have the arts program, which would be attractive to applicants. They have more clubs and college events at this time, which would also be a good attractor. And they have an excellent drop-off and pickup location, which is important especially for our sophomores. Potential disadvantage, a relocation of eight offices and two classrooms. Then, if we take a look at Tarpon, some potential advantages, renovation costs are the same as Clearwater. They have a good drop-off and pickup location. They also have a STEM program, which would be very attractive with the focus in biomedical engineering for our students. And also, Tarpon is growing quicker than the other campuses and it might offer an opportunity for collegiate high school students to be a part of that growth and to be even more connected to the campus. Potential disadvantages, relocation of six classrooms, and right now, fewer clubs and activities for students, which is important to high school students. So, in conclusion, the committee's recommendation that they would like to offer to the board is that we house the collegiate high school on the Tarpon Springs campus. I've also been asked to share my personal recommendation as principal and my vote was for Clearwater. The reason I chose Clearwater is it's a little more centrally located. So, if we have parents who reside in North Pinellas but they work in Mid Pinellas, that might be a factor in terms of attracting students. Also, the Clearwater campus has a little more clubs and activities right now and of course, that is an attractor. That said, I really believe either campus that you select, we will attract plenty of students, we will continue to have extensive wait lists, and the program will continue to be very, very successful. So, with that, the committee and I, and I'm sure everyone else in the room, would really like to hear your thoughts on what you think is the best campus to house the collegiate high school.
Thank you very much. Can you fill us in a little bit on the committee, the size of the committee, and was it just a majority vote that swayed their recommendation for Clearwater? How did that work?
Okay, so the committee met a few times. Members of the committee did go to visit the two campuses. I think the committee was between eight and 10 members. And we really had a nice cross-mix of senior leadership, Jim Wechter, Charm was a part of that, myself, Catherine Kennedy. And we really wanted to take a look at which campus we thought really was the most viable. So, we looked at lots of factors. The factors I shared today were the major ones that we looked at in terms of trying to determine which campus. Honestly, either one is a great, is a great selection. And so, the committee kind of went back and forth, but when the final tally came in, Tarpon had more votes than Clearwater.
Okay.
I think it was six to three or seven to three, from memory.
I appreciate that explanation. I too think either campus would obviously house it. And I looked at it more from the high school student perspective as opposed to the needs of the college. So, I'll couch my comments from that standpoint because I think to your point and some of the things you said... the things you said today, there might be very good reasons of synergy for Tarpon. My personal preference would be the Clearwater campus, I think, for a couple of reasons. One, while it's considered mid-Pinnellas, I think that most people in Clearwater view themselves as living too far from Tarpon to go to Tarpon on a regular basis, or else those students who we potentially would attract would already be at Eastlake or Palm Harbor perhaps. And that was a question that I had. But then, but I don't know that residents in Palm Harbor necessarily view Clearwater or as being so far to come to campus, if that's their option. So I see that, and I see the opportunity of getting people from Seminole, Largo, Pinellas Park to Clearwater where they would not go to Tarpon. I was curious, from the type of students that we attract, are these the same students who would be in the STEM program, or in the math and engineering program, or in the IB program at Eastlake and Palm Harbor, in those special programs that they have, that there appears to be a void of those types of academic programs in mid-Pinnellas, albeit Largo now has an IB program? But are we filling a gap in, I guess, I'm partial to think that there perhaps is a gap of academics in central Pinellas? So that was why I was asking. I don't know if that's just my perception or reality.
So a couple of answers. First of all, St. Petersburg Gibbs, the current collegiate high school, the majority of our students we pull from Seminole, Pinellas Park, and the St. Pete IB program. So if you look at the significant numbers that we're pulling in, those are our feeder patterns, if you will. I do think our students very much are interested in STEM careers and in engineering, especially pre-med. We have a lot of students who are really looking at that. I think your point is a good point in terms of, I don't know that they have that. Mid-County, I do know that Largo has an IB program, and I would assume that that need would be met there. Other than that, off the top of my head, I know that Eastlake has the engineering program, Palm Harbor University has the, you know, the medical programs there. So your point, I'd have to do a little more research to actually be sure if we're filling that gap mid-Pinnellas.
There may be things that outweigh from the college's needs and the synergy that having this on Tarpon's campus would create for the college, and so I don't want to discount that at all. But that being said, my personal preference would be to see this in Clearwater and have the ability to have such a program in Clearwater. I'm open.
More comments, questions?
I think Laura Lee will kill me for saying this, because I agree, I think it should be in Clearwater as well. And I think the data shows that it should be in Clearwater.
That was my preference before the presentation, and I'm not sure that I'm swayed from that.
If we have it at Clearwater, looking at the data on, well, mine says Slide 61, but I'm sure that's not the slide number. But when we look at the data on the waitlist, and you see that many of the Tarpon students are more into the early college program at Tarpon, because that's it, they're not coming, they're not coming down to the St. Pete campus to Gibbs.
I have a few, I do. But it's a hardship for them, the distance is so great. So one example, I had a student last year who was a sophomore. Her mother literally quit working for a year so she could transport her child to the collegiate high school as a 10th grader. She came to me midway this time last year and said, will my daughter do well in the early college program? I need to go back to work. I said, absolutely, she's thriving in the early college program. I think it really is a matter of, we've only had one collegiate high school, and so it does offer something different. And I think the distance has been an issue, and that's why those numbers are so low. It's just a matter of logistics. Getting all the way down to the South County and then turning around and getting back to work, it's difficult. But we do have some students that do come from North County, and that varies every year.
You know, I've been thinking about this for a while, and I was, I've been leaning towards the Tarpon campus for many different reasons. And I kind of pulled back a little bit late last week and was trying to put myself in the mind of a high school student. And I think, as we talked about with our pillars, and as we've discussed before in prior meetings, engagement is extremely important to the student experience, whether that be in high school or in college. And at this point in time, I feel like the Clearwater campus has more to offer from that perspective and that standpoint. I also agree with you, Ms. Cole, I sense that there's somewhat of a gap in mid-County as far as high school education and what can be offered there. So at this time, I am actually leaning towards Clearwater, too. And I will say, I really don't like to go against the committee. They were put together for a reason, they spent a lot of time on this, and there are very good reasons for both options. That's just where I am, and...
Let me just, logistically, I think we're more apt to pull kids, you know, Seminole, Largo, Tarpon Springs, to a Clearwater campus. I'm just not sure about the feasibility of putting it on our most northern border. It's not like we're going to draw from Pasco, from Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie, or maybe we do, maybe, but that's not our intent. And I don't think we can with our, with Pinellas County School Board, so I just, I mean, that is as far north in this county as you can get. But if you put a dot and you draw a circle around it, I think, just from a purely logistic map standpoint, Clearwater makes more sense. So I'll move that we select Clearwater as the site of our next St. Petersburg Collegiate High School.
Any other conversation or questions before we vote? And I will just add to that, I, it is my hope that this is just one in the next step of more programs like this, and that we find that this is an extremely successful program as the first one has been, and we can do more in the future. Hopefully, this is not the end of the collegiate high school programs. So with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved, Clearwater.
Thank you very much. May I also thank all the members of the board who did the governance training during the holidays? Thank you for that. I am so sorry with the timing. And also, thank you to all of you who are doing the forms and sending in your bios and your resumes for the application. The application will be delivered to Pinellas County schools on February 1st. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the new business in the consent agenda. I would recommend that we take these all as one group.
We approve the consent agenda.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Even re-upping the subscription to the Tampa Bay Business Trip.
We will move past Section 8, which was the informational reports, which you all should have seen and read over. And we'll move to the next action item, which is the proposed changes to our rules manual. Any questions or comments regarding the health-related programs and the rules for the associate and science certificate? Do I have a motion to approve those rule changes?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And with that, we come to the president's report.
All right, thank you so much. I want to go back a little bit to talk about where we are legislatively. We did spend some time last week working with the Senate on Senate Bill 540, and with the House on House Bill 83. And as a college, we're really focusing on maintaining our ability to be responsive to our communities and being able to have an opportunity to lead the college without having a governing board. We're also focusing on funding for the college and trying to get the resources back from last year, as well as additional resources for the year going forward. And we're looking at our baccalaureate degrees and focusing a lot on being able to continue to have the ability to offer those degrees without any kind of restriction. And so those are some of the things that we're focusing on legislatively. We will be taking a group of our leaders from Leadership SPC to Tallahassee, I believe it's the first or second week of February, and then we'll take our students the following week. Within about 30 days, I'll be presenting a report on my first 120 days, what has been accomplished, and where we're going forward for the next three months, so that the entire college will know what our focus is and what we're working on, as well as sharing the data that the entire college can enjoy, celebrating the work that you've done in the fall, and anticipating what we need to do to be just as good, if not better, for the spring term. So I look forward to getting that information out to the college and to the board as a whole. And again, I want to thank everyone for what you did in the fall, because there was a lot of work that you put together to get those students through, as well as your own households after having the hurricane, and then enjoying the sex accreditation visit. So I just want to thank you for that, and you'll be receiving that report within 30 days.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next meeting is on February 20th at the Douglas Jamerson Jr. Midtown Center. Hope to see all of you there. Thank you for coming out today, and with that, we are adjourned.